Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number 12 on July the 31st, 2023. Statement of Notice, please.
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 6, 2023, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Krenzel. Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Gindy.
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Here.
Councilwoman Mira.
Here.
Councilman Olivera. Council President Siula.
Here. Please rise for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a moment of silence. Thank you. There are no proclamations. End of session. Move on to ordinance for second reading, 2023-23.
2023-23, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of Block 212, Lot 6.03, to John J. Hergeth Jr. in accordance with the provisions NJSA 40A:12-13B and NJSA 40A:12-13.2.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Wave the full reading.
Wave the full reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open this up to the public. Anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance 2023-23, please come forward, state your name and address on first call, second call, third call.
Motion closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? Buddy? The motion to adopt the ordinance?
Adopted.
Second up.
We have a motion by Mrs. Ballas, second by Mr. Gindy. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindy.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes. Ordinance 2023-24 by first reading.
Ordinance 2023-24, an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, Chapter 193, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, by amending Section 193-31.1, Schedule 2A, Handicap Parking thereof.
I move that ordinance, that council pass ordinance 2023-24 on its first reading by title only, and let the clerk be authorized to publish same as is required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at a meeting at 7:00 PM on August 21st, 2023, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second up.
We have a motion by Mrs. Ballas, second by Mr. Gindy. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas, Councilman Gindy.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes. Moving on to ordinance 2023-25 on first reading.
Ordinance 2023-25, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 72, entitled Public Safety Department of.
I move that council pass ordinance 2023-25 on its first reading by title only, and let the clerk be authorized to publish same as is required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at a meeting at 7:00 PM on August 21st, 2023, in the council, via video conference Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second up.
Motion by Mrs. Ballas, second by Mr. Gindy. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas, Councilman Gindy.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes. Okay, moving on to reports. Let's start. Mr. Gindy?
The only thing after report is National Night Out is tomorrow at the St. Mark's Christian Orthodox Park Lot.
Mrs. Ballas?
I have nothing at this time due to the summer schedules for our departments.
Okay. Mr. Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. The seniors group, the Office on Aging, are changing a few things around come Thursdays in August. The Body Flow Classes with Dylan are being replaced by Cardio Fitness with Sharon. It's going to be light, it's going to be a cardiovasculine fitness activity, light to moderate, and appropriate footwear strongly recommended if anyone, no sandals, slides, or flip flops. Of course, National Night Out is tomorrow night, and the Summer Festival is coming up too on Friday, the 11th. The monthly mingle will be Thursday, I mean, yeah, right. Monthly mingle is at Bizet's Pond on Friday, August 18th at 12:00 PM. It's $10 prepaid. Sign up on, starting tomorrow at August 1st. And then the armchair travel is sign up begins on Thursday, August 1st also. That is a $10 prepaid, and that's a visit to Harold's Deli in Edison, and I believe the country of is Israel. That's pretty much it that I have. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mara?
I'll start off with the library. For anybody who doesn't know, the library is going to be open all summer, and they have a lot of events for the kids. Wednesday mornings, they'll have Storytime at the Community Garden at 10:00 AM. They have their Lego Club, Dungeons and Dragons, Little Learner Storytime. They even have Read to a Dog on Tuesdays at 2:00 PM. So if you haven't stopped by, I know this last week, they also had a Harry Potter theme for Harry Potter's birthday. So there's a lot of fun events down at the library. If you haven't gone down, take your kids and sign up. It's free. National Night Out is tomorrow. I know a lot of tables will be out there, including the library. The Shatrie Commission will also have a table out there. Please stop by and help us out. I know we're coming down to our, figuring out what our slogan is going to be for Stop Littering in South River. We're down to our top 10. Hopefully, we'll have that out soon. So stop at those tables for National Night Out. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to our professionals. Chief?
The only thing I have for the agenda is Resolution 242, is the appointment of Director Winkler. Police Officer, he is replacing, if we should have recently resigned, but graduated from the Atlantic County Academy, and... And everyone up here said tomorrow between 5:00 to 8:00 at St. Mark's Christian Academy is our National Night Out event. Please come out and support police officers. This is, I believe it's our 15th time we've done this, our National Night Out event, but it's the 40th anniversary for the National Association of Cal. We have a lot of vendors, we have a couple of...
Thank you. Let's see. Chief Wolf?
Right now, we're at 40, I'll tell you, last day, but we're on 46 calls for the five, as quote, on every, of our host testing, 31st, I think, got moved because of... 31st process right now with the new engine. If everything goes accordingly, it'll be here the week of the 21st, probably next week.
Got it. Okay.
I had a quick question, if I may. Do we have an idea of what caused the fire yet, or we don't know yet?
I haven't spoken to the fire official about it recently. Ask him for the next meeting to see if I can get an answer or not.
Yes, please.
As far as I know, it's still under investigation, but right now, that's all I know.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Zenga?
Tax bills were mailed last week. The due date from resolution extends to August 23rd. For the resolutions, purchase of a police vehicle through an Educational Service Commission co-op, and a purchase of a sweeper, that was in this year's bond ordinance through a co-op.
Okay. Any questions?
I do. I have a quick question, Joe. Looking at the bill list, and I thought OP-Solv was pretty high. Did anything change there, or?
Three months' worth, that's why.
How come we were past due on those?
They just billed us last week for three months.
Okay. And that's our normal?
Monthly, and for some reason, they didn't bill for the last couple of months. This week, we got three invoices, so that's why. That's three months' worth.
Okay. That was it. It just looked different. That's why I asked.
Yeah, then the bills are normal. It's just times three. Instead of one month, they usually see as one month, you know, but now it's three months.
Did we ask them what will happen, or?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it's their money, so if they want to bill us, we'll keep our funds in the account and, you know, prove them if they want to bill us in three months, so.
Okay.
They should bill monthly, but that's, I'm not going to force them to bill monthly, you know.
Okay. Mr. Koch?
Thank you. So the 2022 Local Aid Program is done. The roads are taken care of. We're just working to see if any punch list items. 2023 Local Aid Program, we're working on the design. The 2024, well, 2023 Local Aid, Local Transportation Projects, we submitted that grant. Wait for the DOT grant request. Wait to hear from the DOT. Same with the 2024 Local Aid Program. We submitted that grant application, waiting to hear from them. The electrical substation, we closed out the 2020 project and submitted a proposal for the 2023 maintenance, which I see there's a resolution on your agenda for. Water Treatment Plan upgrades, I think there's just a few minor punch list items left. The Stormwater Assistance Grant, we are scheduling the survey work for this year's portion of the project. And Fitzpatrick Field Groundwater Problem, we put together a proposal and submitted that to the Borough.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Koch? Ms. Wyatt?
I have nothing tonight, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Lundenski?
Thank you, Council President. The only thing I have today is the staff at the Building Department has prepared a flyer that will be in the lobby of 48 Washington Street in three languages, Portuguese, Spanish, and American, frequently asked questions. We hope this will help the public answer questions about what hours of work you can do, what you need to get a permit, what you don't need to get a permit. So they should be out in the next week or so in the lobby. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Lundenski?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Moving on, at this time, I'd like to open up to the public. You have 10 minutes to speak. Please state your name and your address on first call.
Good evening, Council President, board members and officials. My name is Joe Donato. I live at 30 Daly Street in South River, and I did get my tax bill, and I already paid it. So, I'm doing good there. The reason why I wanted to come up and speak tonight is, past meetings, we've been talking about grants, and I've heard from a number of public, you know, public officials, that we have people on staff in South River that handle these grants. It seems to me there's more than one person, and maybe just one. I'm not sure. And so I put in an over request asking who these people are, what their titles are, what their qualifications are for doing the decisions. Asked what they've reviewed, and how successful it was, maybe copies of these different grants, and I was politely told that that information is not available. I responded politely that I disagreed, and that everything I'm asking for is of public record. That's what it should be. And so I was publicly asking tonight that those who were involved in that particular application, if they would review it again and provide me the information that I requested.
If I may, Council President, we received clarification. I received your email from the Borough Clerk on Wednesday. I'm going, I'm reviewing it, and I will provide a response in the next couple of days. I believe our response would be due by Friday. So I intend to review it in the next day or two. So I will be reaching out. Welcome.
I'm a little experienced with this, because I do it on a county level, so.
Understood.
That's why I tried to be as specific as possible.
Understood. And I will be reaching out in the next day or two.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all you can have my, whoever, next person, whoever it is, they can have my minutes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Richard Byrne, 11 Bizet Place. I'm your Environmental Commission Chair. So I, we have an appointment, Madalena Rivera. And for the first time since I've been involved in the Environmental Commission, we have a full complement of regular alternates and junior members. So it warms the heart that we've got people willing to volunteer for this stuff. So thank you for the approval of the appointment. And so we will be tomorrow at the National Night Out. We'll have literature, we'll have Borough calendars. Somebody asked on Facebook for one, we'll have one. We seem to have made progress with Mr. Suarez and Rutgers between the statement of work and the whole process for our rain garden project. So Rutgers came out last Friday, I think, and did the final actual survey from which they're going to do the architectural drawing, which will then be the final plan. So they're and I can't say enough thanks to Dorian Kerber, who is really the Energizer Bunny on this stuff. So, I mean, she may be kind of a lot sometimes to talk to in person, but she's, she does, she does get results. So thanks to Dorian. And what else did I want to say? What? Well, I'll thank him personally when he's here, so. That's all I can think of. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Sean Hauserman, 211 Willett Avenue, South River. I noticed on the bill list, again, that OP-Solv bill for $59,000, I believe it was. What do we pay OP-Solv $19,000 a month
Buildings and collections. Electric and water buildings and collections.
And we pay another company to take the, is that Byram still that takes the readings?
Byram has the file that goes into the buildings then.
Okay, so we're paying about $22,000 a month just to read the meters?
OP-Solv runs around $15,000 electric and probably about $4,000 water, and then Byram is probably about $3,000 something a month, yes.
So if you change all the water meters over, how much is that going to be every month?
For OP-Solv?
For either one, or both?
Byram does electric. Even if we change the water meters around, it's still the same thing. It's based on each piece of bill that goes out.
And how much is that? I just wanted to know how much we're paying, just to keep the...
About $4,000 a month for water. Still going to stay the same. They don't, they don't get an increase or decrease based on new water meters.
And then what about OP-Solv?
No, that's what I'm talking about. OP-Solv doesn't get anything different based on new water meters.
Okay. I also noticed a, I think it was about $3,000 some for the purchase of a motor for the insertion valve, or valves. Is that one motor we bought, or how many?
The water treatment plant? That's one, one spare motor. We repaired the other motor. We have to have a spare in place at all times. We did not have a working spare.
And then is that for the valves that have to be turned on and off and recorded and sent?
That's for the backwash system.
Oh, okay. So we don't have motors on those other valves?
What?
That have to be, the fellow from the water company?
Everything has, they may not all have motors on them, no.
Okay, all right. And I'm just wondering, can anybody finally give me some information on that $900,000 payment we made at the two meetings ago? Why did we have to make that
Talking about nine, which $900,000?
You have a lot of $900,000 payments, or just the one?
It costs applying electric and everything we do.
Okay, but on two meetings ago, there was a settlement.
He's talking about the chaotic settlement.
There you go.
We cannot discuss.
I would caution counsel not to go into details regarding the settlement. You can talk about the settlement in generalities. If there was a settlement, the amount of it, but I would caution you not to talk about the details. There were clauses in there that prohibit.
Was there a non-disclosure agreement signed? I mean, it's public record now, correct?
No, it's public record, yes.
And, and it's been settled?
Yes. So the fact that there's a settlement agreement, that settlement agreement is public record, it's, so is the resolution. That is absolute public record, but the details going behind that is, is, should not be released, and should not be discussed by counsel.
So if I operated it, what would be the result?
We'd receive the resolution and the settlement agreement.
Okay, but how about the court order that said you had to pay by July 5th?
You don't need to operate a court order. I don't know if you even have record of that. You can get that off of the court website.
Okay. But how about like the depositions? Can we get those?
That I do not know. That's something that I would have to look into. If they were uploaded to the court website, yes, but I don't know if they were, that's something that we can look into for you?
But at least we would understand that there was a settlement made, because a Borough employee basically sued the town, and although Mr. Lundenski says we didn't lose, we had to pay $900,000. That's correct, I believe, right?
$800.
I thought it was 900, because we talked about it at the one point, and I said 900 a number of times, and nobody corrected me. But now it's 800? So $250,000 was still the payment we made, and then 550 for the JIF?
Yeah.
Okay. So I noticed on this bill list, we're paying the JIF, our semi-yearly payment of $390,000. When was the original, the first payment made to the JIF this year? I believe January. And then do we know how much that payment was?
It was another payment of that. So what you see tonight is half of the payment for the year.
Okay, so if there's a reassessment based on the payment they had to make, that would be next January 1st?
Correct.
Okay. And I noticed that, I guess they're doing some work at Volunteers Park at the bottom of Johnson Place. What is that for? I saw a payloader out there the other day, and it looked like they were ripping up the field.
Inspection, inspection of the equipment and by us and by an installer, seeing the equipment to be dangerous.
So they removed it, is what you're saying?
They removed it.
Okay. And is something else going up, or what's going to happen?
Beyond for next year's discussion.
Okay. I was going to say, it just, it just seems tough that you would do all that right when the kids should be using the field, but it's all done, I would assume, by now, right? And Mr. Koch had mentioned that he submitted a report to the Borough on what is possible to do for the basketball court area being flooded over at Fitz's Field. Do we, do we know what's in that report yet, or?
Let me discuss the mayor and council.
Okay. I mean, it's just a report. Are you aware of what the recommendations are, or?
Not recommendation, it's a quote for possible work.
Okay. Shouldn't be secret, right? It's just a report from Mr. Koch. Do we know what, how much it's cost?
Approximately somewhere between four and a half, $450,000 to $550,000.
To solve the water problem?
Yes.
Half a million, okay. That seems pretty high. Is there some reason we went ahead and did the basketball court first before we solved the water problem?
Basketball court was always there.
Yeah, but it's a concrete, it's a concrete basketball court now. It used to be asphalt.
You know, you just redid it.
Seemed like we should have done the water first, because I'm sure you've seen it. It's now totally, it's totally...
Time wasn't that much of a problem, remember last year?
Totally stained. I mean, the original one was stained, now the new one is stained. It's a shame that you spent the money to pull that money in, and then now we have to, I don't know if it can even be cleaned. Like I said, it just seems like maybe some of these decisions don't seem to be made in the proper order. Ripping up the one park during the summer when the kids should be using it, redoing a basketball court only to find out that the flooding was still going to go on, and now you're talking maybe a half million dollars to repair the flooding. Like I say, I just question the way the decisions are being made. Do we have any follow-up? A couple of meetings ago, you mentioned that the, somebody was interested in building a parking garage, and we were spending, I believe, $8,000 to hire someone to give us information on what should be done about that?
Still in draft form.
Okay, so...
Hope to have it done, the draft approved by the next council meeting.
Next, yes, fine. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public on first call?
How you doing? Scott Ford, 84 Ferrer Street. I'm here for two reasons. First reason, I'm the president of the South River Downtown Alliance, nonprofit organization to help the redevelopment of Main Street down here. Some people know this, some people don't. So I wanted to come out and introduce myself. I know Dorian's a great person. A little hard to deal with that sometimes, but she, her heart's in it for good reasons.
Absolutely.
You know, and it would be interesting to find out what the gentleman said of who the people are that do go after the trust, the grants in the town, because Dorian's on our team for that purpose too, by the additional grant for the town, to try and get more funding without bonding everything. Something, that's something I wanted to bring up that way through there. And then I have my personal stuff from 84 Ferrer Street, so I just have things to bring up to the council, questions, maybe statements. Don't expect an answer tonight. I was going to send an email, didn't have a chance to, so I could send it out. One thing was, I noticed we need another person. I don't know what it's going to take to do, but I want to discuss with everybody for the enforcement and inspections in town. We have one gentleman doing all the work. Not sufficient enough to provide quality service to the town, okay? Backlog of permits that have never been closed out. So my thought was get another person on staff, and maybe look for liaison to go through the back records of all the permits that have never been closed out. So that's one of my, one of my things there. Noise. So a lot of complaints. I've made complaints. Question is, is how many times do you have to complain about a specific address before something else is done, other than tell them to keep the noise down? Not everywhere in town is a commercial industrial area, it's residential zones. Everybody has a right to quality of life, and it's not appropriate that everybody should have to call the police to say, can you tell them to turn it down? Can you tell them to be quiet, over and over? But it's probably an ordinance or something that should be addressed to the resident that says, hey, if you got to come back out, you're going to get fined, you're going to get something. I don't feel it's good quality resources for the police officer to constantly go back to the same address. And I've seen people complain about this throughout the town. What else? Commercial vehicle parking on the streets. Big issue. Big issue in town. I don't know who's to address it. I don't know why it never gets addressed. You know, there's one right over here, called on George and Thomas. You can't even see, because there's a double, a duly diesel truck parked right there. Sometimes he's in no parking zone, sometimes he's right after it. You got to go across the street to see down the road. Doesn't belong parked there. Sometimes he's on sidewalk. Just saying, if an officer goes by, hey, do something. They shouldn't be have to told to be like, hey, there's a truck illegally parked here, blocking view. So that's why I'm bringing it up, because there's a lot of complaints about that. Commercial vehicles parked all over, doing what they want. Nobody's enforcing anything with it. What else we got? I've had complaints myself, has also received it from employees of the Borough with attitudes. People come to you for questions or looking for answers, and the first response is a negative attitude. Not necessary, not needed, definitely not by the people who pay the taxes in this town. Not appreciated, and it's unacceptable, and it needs to stop. I've experienced it with three people. I'm not naming names, but we can get into that conversation offline if you want. What else we got? Delivery vehicles, that's another issue. They just park all over, do what they want, block up roadways. You know, I'm sure we got ordinances, or they should be doing something else. Go down George, you're blocking it up, nobody can drive down the street. You know, what's to be done with this? A lot of complaints about it. I see it all over. You know, I almost hit, well, actually, I sideswiped the FedEx truck. I didn't sideswipe it, but I almost hit him, because he parked his truck at an angle, and I was squeezing through, and I'm like, this is ridiculous. I'm like, he saw me coming, and he parked, and he got out and left. I'm like, you can't even drive down the street. What if an ambulance has to go by? What if the fire truck has to go by? Now you got to wait for the guy to get out, move the truck. It's unacceptable. And the water lines in town. So I sent an email out about it and I recognized that Milltown has gotten state funding, $2 million for water replacement, right? So, well, and they got some last year, it's one and a half million. We didn't get anything. I don't know why. You know, is it we're not working with the proper people with the state level or what is it? So that's why I'm just bringing it up so we can say, hey, let's, what do we need to do to address this so we can get some of the funding other towns are receiving outside of bonding? Plus, the other thing which I mentioned to people is, is we have county roads, right? Isn't the county responsible for the maintenance of these water lines, sewer lines, curbs? Do they have no responsibility with that?
It's not their water and sewer lines.
Okay, so that's.
Did it ask the county for money?
It's not what I understand with the state when it comes to the water management system. You have to identify where your water management tied into county lines and if that's a county road, it's a county line. That's my understanding when I talk to the state on it. So that's why I'm bringing it up. It's a county road, the county should be responsible for maintenance of it other than just ripping it up to, you know, do road improvement. And if not, that's fine, but we need to see what other kinds of funding there are because if other towns are getting funding, we should be able to qualify for funding. So, you know, these are why I'm bringing these matters up because I just, I don't expect answers. I'm just like, you know, I'd like to just bring it up and then discuss it, maybe get answers, I'll send an email out. And that's pretty much it for me right now and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to second to close, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. Okay, we're moving on to mayoral appointments, Human Relations Commission, Nita Chata?
Chagrin.
Chagrin? Okay. And the Environmental Shade Tree Commission Advisory Board, Madalena Rivera. Those are two appointments from the mayor. Okay, moving on to our consent resolutions.
Whereas Resolution 2023-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time, now therefore be it and is hereby resolved that the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2023-240 to 2023-257, 240 authorize an extended grace period for the third quarter property taxes, 241 property tax refund for a total disabled veteran, 242 authorizing conditional appointment of Brett Glenka as police officer, 243 permit a voluntary canning fundraiser to support the Head Over Heels Parent Association, 244 granting renewal to ABC licenses July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, 245 summer help appointment of Brandon Lell to the Department of Administration, 246 purchase of a police vehicle, 247 authorizing the execution of an indemnification and hold harmless agreement, 248 authorizing the offering for sale of borough property, 249 authorizing CME associates to perform engineering services for the Willett Avenue Substation annual maintenance, 250 summer help appointment of Eduardo Garcia to the Department of Administration, 251 authorize certain utility refunds, 252 appointment to the Office on Aging Department, 253 authorizing pay estimate number five and closeout change order to High Energy Electrical Testing Incorporated, 254 accept July 10th, 2023 regular and executive session minutes, 255 authorize the bills and claims lists, 256 authorizing the purchase of a sweeper for the Department of Public Works, 257 approval of a special events permit to the VFW for an event to be held on August 19th, 2023.
Motion to move consent resolutions.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes, with the abstention to 255, which would be 22 dash 02795, 02907 and 23 01643.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes, with the, I'd like to abstain from resolution number 257.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes, with the abstention from 255, numbers 22 dash 02795, 22 02907, 22 02058, 22 02683, 21 00062, 23 01643, 23 01749 and 23 02154. Okay, at this point in time, any new business to be brought up? Okay, let's move on to governing body comments. We started there, let's start with Ms. Mira.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you for whoever looked out for summer help with the high school kids. That's much appreciated. I know last year I asked about it, we only got one. This year we have two. I just want to know though, did we advertise for it or did people?
We advertised on the website and we advertised in all the borough departments.
Okay, good. So I'm glad that we got that done. Bruce, I haven't seen your proposal yet, but I do want to mention if we're going to look into fixing the groundwater for Fitz's Park. I know that the Shade Tree Commission had mentioned trying to get a rain garden there.
I'm big on that and a butterfly garden. I'm thinking of both in those two areas.
Okay, because that was definitely a discussion that we had. I know when we were looking into rain gardens and we started off with the Rutgers program.
I think the rain garden would be by the basketball court, I think the butterfly garden over by the kids thing, but that's why my proposal has the landscape architect included in it.
Okay.
And then I've got the geologist, but it's going to be a storm sewer line with parallel pipes and a retaining wall up by the substation and pipes behind it, underground and in the front, but I do think that's an option and I want to bring her into the fold, the head of our landscape department to see if we can take advantage of that water in some spots and actually make it work.
Okay, because I would definitely say that's something that the, the environmental commission was definitely big on, especially in that park.
I think so.
I do have a concern though with that water. If you look at the water that lays on the basketball court, it looks like it has like a sheen coat of something, like an oil in that water and that really worries me, especially at a park. So I don't know if when you did your testing, did you test the water in that area?
No, we didn't test the water. Just did groundwater elevations.
I mean, that's, I'm big on that concern because I mentioned it years ago when that was always flooding and it continues to flood and it continues to have like a shiny grease to it.
You can have a lab, your lab come out and do a test, but I think a lot of it is iron in the soil, that's why you're getting the staining.
Okay.
I think a good part of it is that, but I wouldn't hesitate to suggest getting, somebody just come out and grab a sample and see if there's anything in it that's of concern, but I can clearly see the iron staining on the concrete basketball court, it's very evident there.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to mention about that. I mean, we have everybody coming up about grant writers. I feel that is very important for us to have. I know we have people in administration that are looking for things, but I think having somebody or teaching somebody well and to learn and find these grants and really, you know, push to get some funding is very important and I'll keep saying it until we figure out how to do it. I also want to mention that a resident reached out to me regarding our town, okay? So we don't have anything for the kids water-wise, like Milltown has a pool. A resident mentioned to me that in Marlborough, they have a swim club and they do a shared service agreement with Olbridge, Coltsneck and Manalapan, which gives better rates for people not from Marlborough to be able to use their pool facilities. I'm wondering if we, since we already have some shared service agreements with Milltown, could that be an idea that South River could do with Milltown?
Possible, possible, possible.
Yes?
Yeah, it's possible.
Talk to Jason, maybe with the rec department and see what they can come up with.
Well, I would think that it would come through our administrator since we do shared service agreements with them through our DPW, right? Would it be something that we could discuss with Milltown?
Well, I could reach out to the administrator in Milltown, I could reach out to the administrator in East Brunswick, find out what rate they would give us.
Down on that, yeah.
Okay.
Crystal Springs it is, yeah.
Okay, it's worth asking because I know parents around this time, they try to look for things to do with their kids and the closer the better and if, you know, some of these clubs with water, they are asking for like $750 per family for the summer.
That's Crystal Springs is very.
And if you have a shared service, maybe it'll be at a more discounted rate for families, just to make it easier on our residents. I do have another question. I know on July 15th, we had a lot of rain and I don't know if you guys saw, but some of our businesses were impacted with that water. It came down so fast and it flooded Oberge Street. Do we know why Oberge Street is very prone to flooding? Is it our sewer, I mean, our storm water? Is it just a freak thing or is it something that really we should look into because businesses are being affected? I mean, I know, I know everybody keeps asking for barbecue chicken and Royal Barbecue's been closed since that flooding. So do we know what's, what type of storm water drains we have on that street?
There's a low point in Oberge, as I recall, and there's a big culvert that goes out on an angle, somewhat diagonal if I remember correctly. Aegis in here, he could verify if my memory is correct. But if there's flooding downstream, if those inlets are surcharged, then the water can only get in if there's head pressure and sometimes it's not deep enough yet to build the head pressure to push it in. So not saying that's the only thing, I mean, somebody could camera the lines if you wanted to, to make sure there's no obstructions or collapses or something that you're not aware of, but that's where that double inlet is, if I remember right. Aren't that big double inlet that we reconstructed and did work too?
Oberge Street's been flooded like that for 20 years, 30 years.
Over, yeah.
You know.
I'm just saying, you live in South River.
Your road's like flooded too.
I just can't handle it.
Yeah, I know we can't.
Half inches of rain in 20 minutes.
I know we can't control the weather, but if we can at least look into maybe seeing what we can do because it does affect people's cars. I've had a resident tell me he's gotten his car flooded at least three to four times in the last 10 years, you know? So that was that. I want to thank you guys for today authorizing for that coin toss, Head Over Heels Gymnastics. I know a lot of our residents are a part of that program and it just helps out the nonprofit organization, help fund some of these girls. You have a lot of, you know, close to Olympic athletes coming from this area, South River, East Brunswick. As you could tell, we had an Olympian from gymnastics in Olbridge, so any bit of help with their nonprofit is much appreciated by them. I want to thank the rec department. I know they did a bunch of things in this last month. They had a team building day for the cheer program, which was a lot of fun for both kids and parents. They did tie dye day at the, at one of our parks on Friday, gave them new things to do and got them out of being in the air conditioner. I know it was really hot on Friday, but the kids enjoyed the slip and slide and just hanging out outside. And like we've mentioned, the end of summer festival is August 11th. I'm assuming we picked that day not because it was the end of summer, but because it was the end of the rec program, because the rec department is hosting it, but it should be a lot of fun and I hope everybody comes out to it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Krasinski?
Thank you, Council President. First off, I'd like to thank our police, fire, first responders, Robert Wood Johnson, our DPW especially for keeping our towns clean and attending to a lot of the matters that happen, incidents and everything, electrical department, what have you. With that, I really don't have too much to say except I hope to see you all at tomorrow night in National Night Out and we'll see you then.
Thank you. Ms. Ballas?
The only thing I have is I've seen, even on Facebook, you showed me something just before of the scanners. I mentioned it to the chief today that people are getting phone calls from the government wanting information. They're not going to call you, either will the IRS and or will social security. It's not only that, there are people are getting things put in their mailboxes, call this number, we've been trying to reach you to get your personal information for the past three weeks. Don't answer anyone. We do have a no knock ordinance in South River. You can go and apply down at the office on Washington Street. I have my tag on my door and no one knocks on my door anymore. It's almost as good as having a dog. But it really, seniors, whatever, they cross the street, they don't even bother. So do not give anyone any information of any kind, whether they're calling you on the phone or they're coming to your front door. You've got to, everybody's got to keep each other safe. Other than that, tomorrow's National Night Out, the fireworks are the 11th. VFW has a concert on the 19th. There's a lot to do this month, so I hope to see you all at that. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Gindi?
Thank you. First of all, to answer Mark's, some of your questions, you could call the police as much as you want. That's why they're there. Trust me when I tell you. And I know it's the past. I do it. My neighbors do it. When you got loud music that's constantly during a day or a night, there is an ordinance at night, but it doesn't stop you from making that call. And believe me when I tell you, that's why they're there. That's what they do. So please, by all means, call the cops. As for what you're doing, keep it up. That's awesome. All right. Now, I know we have had a couple of discussions about parks. Yes, Volunteers Park, which is considered Bell Park, the equipment was removed, so was Daley's Pond. What you don't know is your equipment has a shelf life, or I should say a life expectancy. The average is anywhere from 10 to 15 years. So once it reaches that, you have what you call the unsafe zone where the kid is running at risk. Most of our equipment, we try to keep it up and going as much as we can, but when they get vandalized or they're outdated, is it worth replacing right away? No. Is it worth us knowing that we're going to be replacing those equipment for the future to come? Yes. Volunteers Park is on the next to be done. Daley's Pond is being done as we speak. So you are going to see the equipment coming soon for Daley's Pond. Next year, or I say, next year, Volunteers Park and the park at Ann Street, which is considered JFK, are our next two in line. Now, we have been doing parks ever since 2018 and we keep on going, from Causeway Park, Fitzpatrick, Varga Park, Leonardine, and now here we're at Daley's Pond. We continue to replace these parts, fields, equipment. Our priority is safety for the kids. So if you have any questions, by all means, feel free to reach out to me, go to Borough Hall, they have renderings for pictures, they'll see exactly what the park will look like. Believe me when I tell you, we're working hard to make this right for the kids. End of the summer, everybody heard about that. Councilman Jason, Councilman Olivera, the reason he's not here today is because on July 21st, weighing at seven pounds, two ounces, he had a baby girl, Noelia. So congratulations to Jason. I know the mom and dad are doing it very well. And last and final, and I know she's going to turn red, she must love South River because one year ago today, we hired our borough clerk and she's still here.
Oh.
She's shaking her head.
She's shaking her head.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anything else come up before council?
That's it.
Oh, I have, I have a question for the chief. No dunk tank this year?
No, we couldn't get anybody to.
You could have made plenty of money. There's a bunch of people up here.
We do that every year.
That's all I have.
I'll remember it for next year.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Your second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.